Alright, welcome to the meeting's order. We'll call Danny here.
Here.
Kimberly, here. Diana, present.
Jeff.
Here.
Brad. I'm also here. Meetings been properly notified? Alright, stand with what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, do I have a commentary to read?
Yes. The Mount Cora area school district in partnership with our community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-reverent in society.
Thank you. To A, approval of the presented revised agenda.
Same.
Motion by Diana, seconded by Brad. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for approval of the November 5th, 2018 regular and exact session minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Brad, seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Alright. Moving on to 3A, Friends of the Board Award. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming to our meeting.
In giving away the Friends of the Board Award tonight, I just wanted to recognize Jessie Schifler, Schiagler, Schiagler, from Aggrace. She has been a tremendous support for our school district for over the past year now. Last November, she helped aid our district after the loss of Matt, and she provided support groups for students throughout the remainder of the school year. During other losses that we've had throughout the year, she has helped administrative team, she's helped staff coming and presenting at staff meetings, she has helped run parent groups and answer parent questions, she's helped meet with students who've experienced loss and wanted to work through it, and still, you know, even as a couple of weeks ago, as we're dealing with reunions and new things that come up, and she's continuing to be a resource for our district in many ways. And so, we wanted to honor her with this award and really truly thank her for her dedication and help to so many people here.
We would like a picture maybe with committee legislative engagement committee and your pastor and YouTube.
I just always forget I have to know.
Right, don't turn left. Alright, go over to the wall. You don't have a loss if you're not in the back. Little shorty.
A little closer.
Yeah. Okay, one, two, three, and we'll do that one for good measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Happy to do it.
We're just gonna use a video footage.
Moving on to 3B, schools.
Well, we're in that transition time, holiday season, sports seasons are transitioning, so it's relatively quiet. The winter sports schedule is carrying up, basketball, wrestling, swimming, gymnastics, all of our sports are underway, finishing the fall musical, and with only two days this short week, staff and students are concoured on a nice five day holiday break. So, relatively quiet right now, which is good.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Now, my kids ask me, why can't, can you just cancel school today and tomorrow?
No. There's no reason.
Alright, I did see on our Facebook page that there's the decade culvers night tomorrow. If you have to see the new culvers, it would be an excuse to go see what they've done with culvers, and then weigh in on the Facebooks, whether you like it or not. Okay, any other school news? Alright, 3C, citizens comments.
None.
Alright, moving on to employment recommendations, there is an agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Diana. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Moving on to 5, consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Diana, seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, 6A.
Can we go back on the plan that we were trying to do that, can I recognize?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, please do.
No, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. That was my bad.
No, that's okay. In the personal transactions that you just approved, we had a retirement notice for Carol Nichols, who will be retiring at semester. So, just wanted to say a couple of things about Carol. So, looking back at her history, prior to coming to our district, she was already in social work for 10 years, and then when she began her employment at Mount Cora in 1992, she's been here for 26 years. So, 36 years in her field, working with families and students, which is pretty remarkable. One of her supervisors said, Beth, said that Carol's interactions with others are friendly and demonstrating warm caring and mutual respect. She has a strong interest and actively collaborates with staff and service leaders throughout the organization, and that is definitely true of Carol going above and beyond her kiddos, reaching out with families, being just on call with families if they need support. So, she's definitely gonna be missed as we move forward, so, thank you.
Do you know who we posted that position, Diana?
I have it going tomorrow.
Okay. Alright. They know that.
No, I'm sorry, Steve mentioned it, and I kinda jumped off my radar.
Alright, so 6A, report from the November 14 WSB Legislative Conference. Good luck with that one. Tell us all about it. I don't know who it was.
So, that was attended by myself, Rob, Diana, Dr. Salerno, and then we were lucky to have Jessica from the Community Legislative Engagement Committee representing parents, whole school district, the proud of parents, which we'd love to boast about, and then also Becky Clappy, who will be joining that committee in January as well. It was run by Dan Ross Miller. Kind of standard in terms of how to communicate with your representative, how to communicate back with you. Probably the most useful portion, I would say, is a nice booklet that WASB prints out that I believe is available on their website, too, that goes through a nice month-by-month schedule of what's happening in the legislature, so that legislation cycles, excuse me, so that you can contact things that might be perfect for what they're discussing on the floor, or if they're out of grid, you should know that, too. So, it was fine, it was three hours in CISA 5, and that was an interesting experience in and of itself to see one of the CISA buildings, and I'm sure that Diana and Rob had further things to comment on, too. I really think you did a great job talking about this one so far.
Rob, go ahead.
That was wonderful. I really don't have anything to add to it, except, I will say the thing that I found interesting was the recommendations that they had for how we could go beyond what I think, I mean, I'm not, I was there because I'm interested in the issues for the general, not because I'm on the committee, and what I found interesting was the idea that we should, we can be more concrete about what our legislative agenda is, that we can be more concrete about what our, what our wants are in terms of, and what we don't want. Actually, that's more valuable, sometimes in legislative affairs than the other way around. So, you know, putting some more meat on the bones in terms of what the, what our legislative agenda is, and clearly identifying, you know, what we, what we would like and what would be really bad if it happened.
Which one they did recommend that actually appoint someone to the board to stay on top of legislation matters outside of district superintendent, and even have the person to write letters perhaps on behalf of the board, and follow the latest happening, so, but that was good advice, try to stay, you know, in conjunction with what's happening instead of reacting to what's happening.
And contact your legislators often.
And I think Steve said there's a legislative lobby type date, March 25th?
Yeah, the day of the Capitol. Yeah. Every year, we get a budget cycle. That's pretty interesting.
When does our meeting start meeting here? In January.
Alright, have anything else?
Thank you guys for going. From Dr. Salerno, I know his podcast also, it's a reminder, he uploaded the WASB toolkit into your shared folder, and the PowerPoint by Dan Ross Miller, so that's in your board resources library. Do you like that?
Awesome. Alright, 6B, board member candidacy updates. Ms. Jackie?
So, the three people who are up for reelection have packed information. The actual notice is going to go in Mount Cora mail for the, for the public to know that there is an election coming up, so if you want to hold on, give them your pick and work until first Friday December, that's probably a good idea. So, every year, something changes slightly, but the first thing that I want to talk to you about is anybody who chooses, I hope you all run again, but if you choose not to run, it would be appreciated if you would fill out the notification of non-candidacy and the, by Friday, December 21st. And the reason for that is if you do not fill out that form, and you do not file as a candidate by the deadline of January 2nd, which is Wednesday this year, it's usually a Tuesday, but Tuesdays falls on New Year's Day, so it's Wednesday, January 2nd, then the deadline for any other candidate to apply is 72, 72 hours is added on, and it just, it causes confusion. I'd have to say till 5 o'clock on Friday. There's very many reasons, and I just think there's some confusion, so I would really appreciate, and so would everybody appreciate, if you choose not to run, which I hope you all do, to please file your notice of non-candidacy with the district office by December 21st at 5 o'clock. So, who's up this year at WSB?
Me, Kimberly, and Jeff.
And then, there is a law, and I think this started last year, maybe the year before even, if you for any reason want to refuse your salary, you have a form, and you have to do it the year before you refuse it. If, if that's your desire, I'm just, and you need to know that, because if you choose to refuse it, and you haven't filled out this form, you're still gonna get a 1099, and you still have to claim, you still claim it. So, if it's something you choose to do, just look at that a little bit closer also. Wouldn't expect any of you to do that, but just so that you're aware of it. For somebody who's newly elected, there's some ambiguity out there. I don't totally understand it, but I do believe you can file paperwork within the 30 days of your election. I have to look at that a little closer, so that you can, you do have that opportunity, although it's not clear to not take that salary if you do that immediately after you have been voted in by the electorate.
And do we have to fill out the finance thing if we're not doing it?
Yes, you still have to fill out that finance paperwork, and you still have to put down some sort of institution.
Right.
You don't have to put down an account number, but you do have to say where you bank.
And is this, one of these you notarized, right?
Yes.
So, we don't sign it ahead of time, because we get, we get, we have to do it over again?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, in January, I'm gonna be bringing you paperwork for the people who are not up for reelection. You have to file a statement saying you're not collecting any dollars, and you may continue to not collect dollars, because I don't think any of you ever have. So, you'll get that paperwork along. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Alright, 6C, Annual School Board Convention. Yay, convention. It is the third weekend in, third week in January, Monday, Thursday. Yeah. And we have to say, we're gonna go up Tuesday night? Yeah, we'll go up Tuesday night, and then leave Friday. So, that's the 20th? I'll tell you right away.
We leave?
Oh, I'm good.
Yeah, like the 22nd or something.
Yeah, the 22nd. We normally leave around 3:30-ish, and then...
So, from the 22nd to the 25th?
Correct. If, yeah, if we're gonna go, we need to let you know right away, if you haven't already.
Is there a deadline for letting you know?
What, well, there's a couple of things. We have a hotel, and I have probably more rooms than we need, so I need to dump them eventually, the extra rooms. I also need, if you think you're gonna go, early registration is December 15th, and that saves us $35. But yeah, if you plan to go, I need to register you and save $35 if possible, and then dump any extra rooms. If you, if you don't think you're gonna make it, I, I have 10 rooms, so I have to get rid of some of them if all of you aren't gonna go.
I'm going.
Okay.
I have a schedule.
I figured you were.
I already took out work.
Anybody else for sure? I will probably go, but I will let you know for sure.
Okay.
Later, about 15:00.
I'm not going.
Jeff, Dana's are not.
I will spend one day in person.
Okay.
I will spend one day in person.
Okay, okay. So, you probably would not be utilizing, I have a hotel room?
I don't think so. I can drive up in the morning.
I'm going, okay. So, I have Leah, Jeff, Diana, and did you say Rob, yes?
I'll shoot you an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, the schedule is already out on the website. There's also an awesome app where you can go in and like pick the classes, classes you want to attend, yes ma'am?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, Steve mentioned in his podcast that the governor was probably gonna speak. We talked about old governor or new governor?
New. New governor, that was what was mentioned.
Yeah. Well, he would stay there anyway, whereas the superintendent of schools always does a few speeches anyway. I don't, I'm not sure.
So, and the governor usually speaks at noon on Fridays.
When does he, when does he get in?
Is it noon or is it 10? Maybe it's 10.
So, first, the second week in January.
Yeah, so it'll be a good noon, governor.
Yeah, so I don't know who will speak for the superintendent of schools.
Well, that's appointed, as we learned at the WASB.
Yeah, that would be answered.
That is appointed by the governor, so that's why Evers is staying in his position until he assumes the governorship, because then he got it, won't the superintendent, until it gets got it again.
So, yeah, I need to look to see when they speak. So, the multi-age concert is that Friday at like 2 o'clock, so I think that'll be 2 or 2:30, I'll have to look. So, depending on who's speaking when, I might either have to drive myself, or see if you guys wanna get back in time for it, either way, but the schedule is out there. There's some interesting, but I just like skimmed it quick and skimmed to some of the speakers where I didn't recognize any names, but I normally don't, and then once I like read their bio, I'm like, oh, I remember that person, I sort of know who they are. So, all that's out there, and if you are going, we totally recommend the app, because it will put it in a little schedule for you, so you know where to go, and if the rooms change, it'll update on there.
So, everybody just kind of picks what they're, this is the first time I've, sorry.
Yep.
So, you just gotta pick what you're interested in, and...
Yep.
If you got the school news in, or late October, early November, it's all in there.
Yeah, there's one general conference each day, even in the morning or the afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, do, we know anything about Baird yet? Are we gonna...
We haven't gotten anything yet for Baird.
Okay.
Are you interested in doing Baird?
I am, yes, if others are.
She sleeps around there.
So, Baird is the, not to be confused with...
Bray.
With Bray, which is very first year, we were all very confused on who's who, but Baird does the, the money, yeah, the financial stuff, and they do a big...
Big meal.
Big meal, and networking, and it's, it's a lot of fun. Yeah.
It's been at different venues. Yeah, they have multiple, the museum, Harley Davidson plays, they, they have places for people to go.
Yeah, one of them will be at the new Bradley Center.
For what?
Forget it. Because it was at the Bradley Center a couple times.
Yeah, it was at the Bradley Center, but I think it would be too hard to get a new place.
Probably.
It's the answer in season, isn't it?
Yeah. So, we went to the Bradley Center during Bucks game, this couple of years.
Yeah, they went, it all closed up and closed off, so, we still have it.
Are you kind of running all over the...
We had chocolate.
All kind of close together.
No, so, we stayed at the Hilton City Center, which is attached to the convention center. So, as long as it's still open, which we learned the hard way one year, that the convention center actually locks, because we missed the last bus. The buses will take you like to the Baird event, it's at the Bradley Center, we missed it, and we're like, oh, no problem, we can just cut through. No, you couldn't cut through, and it was like 15 below zero, so we just ran all that. But everything's connected. We usually eat at the hotel at least once or twice, there are restaurants within walking distance, you don't really need a vehicle. Everything, if we go to the Baird, they provide a bus back and forth, as long as you don't miss the last bus, you're good. But yeah, otherwise, it's all kind of right there.
Do we know who's in the administrative community?
If it's at the museum, then that's when we lock and have war.
Yeah. He told me Scott Buckett coming, or 25th Art of it, or...
Scott's coming, Scott's going, I know, and he's going, Scott has the week Thursday evening.
Okay.
Good for you, Rob, on Sarah? The week prior this year. Yeah, so, so, Danny just pulled it up, so we're staying here, convention center's here.
And then, there's like a mall across the street, which is kind of vacant-ish, but they have like a food court to run over and get food, and that's also attached through a Skywalker, and, yeah.
Oh, right.
So, all the classes are at the convention center, just across different floors.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta walk all the way over to the high end.
Yeah, we, the one year we ended up at a different hotel, that was quite the hike.
The courtyard?
Yeah, courtyard.
Yeah, and walkie blocks are long, they're long, especially, especially in January. It seems that every year for the convention is always the coldest day, and there's also Starbucks in the hotel, which is very awesome, for your coffee fix.
Alright, any other questions about convention? Alright, moving on to 7A, we have a very long titled policy, Part 10 Attendance Options for Pupils Enrolled in a Private School, Tribal School, or Home-Based Private School Program Policy Number 423.
Thank you.
Go for you.
Yeah, so, the policy you just mentioned was brought to the education committee twice, for two different readings and some clarification. We currently have this policy on the books, however, the current policy, everything is combined together, and it's very hard to tease out and understand what's, what language pertains to private or tribal students, or home-based private education students. So, this new policy divides out private and tribal school students, and lays out the parameters for that, and then also the same thing for the home-based, sometimes also home-school students, that private education program piece of it. Making sure, so those two things are outlined separately in sections, making sure the language and state statutes align, and trying to think some more notable pieces of this, just spelling out not only the academic piece, but also the interscholastic and club piece, so it's defined as to what is permissible, what is not permissible, and then also teasing out what is allowed at the elementary and middle school levels versus high school levels as well, just so there's no guesswork in moving forward with what is allowable and not allowable. Yeah, I'm sorry, page 87, need to add to this.
No, we just spent a lot of time clarifying the difference between if you're a private or tribal school student, what are you allowed to come to our buildings and take as far as classes, and you're very limited to which classes you can take, non-core academic areas, versus a home, what we all call home-school student, who can come and take two classes, but it's more wide open what you can come take? So, that's fair to say.
Which category of online kids fall into? Which category of online kids fall into?
So, it depends if they're our student, so if it's, if it's an online school, that'd be like an open enrollment piece, so if they're like Wisconsin Virtual School, and they're not enrolled in our school, but they're our residents, so that's even different. If it's a home-school student, then they would have home-school students paperwork with the state, and that parent like to choose whatever program they would like to do, but they're administering the program, it's not through our school district. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so there's, what you're saying is there's yet another category that doesn't even apply.
Yeah, that would be the, like, the open enrollment, Part 10 open enrollment piece. Diana, you, and what you brought about grade levels, with the tribal and private school piece, we did tease out elementary and middle school versus high school, because high school students, we do have to allow up to two courses, however, for the middle school and elementary level, for private, private tribal school students, it is up to the school board to decide that. We decided to keep that language, or add this language about academic and non-core academic areas, just keeping in mind that you don't receive state aid for those elementary and middle school students, so we just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page about that, that's why we didn't include the academic areas. But for home-based private education, any student K through 12 can enroll to take up the two courses, so we wanna make sure to follow state statute with that.
And the, the participation in either WIA sanctioned or non-sanctioned events, was that statute controlled, or was that district controlled? I don't remember.
Yep, so, for, I'm gonna start with home-based private education students, those students may participate in interscholastic athletics, that's, that's a WIA sanctioned piece, so that is allowable, but if we have that information for home-based private, people may be wondering, I'm sorry, for home-based, people may wonder, what about private tribal school students? So, we didn't want any fuzzy grade areas by not putting language in, so we did put language in about students who attend private or tribal schools who may not participate in our interscholastic or club events, just because we didn't want to leave a void there, and it had us wondering, so we wanted to make sure we put that in. It's not in any statute language, but that void left some grade area.
Okay, thanks. I wanna go back to Danny's question, so the reason that those virtual students are not a part of this is because they're considered enrolled full-time in those virtual schools.
True, so, so, McFarland, I believe, has what was not some virtual school, so they need, they're going through McFarland as our resident, so that would not apply necessarily.
They would be subject to that district's policies regarding whether they could participate in WIA things, if that's true.
I believe so, I could look back into that part.
Are there situations where...
There's many different tiers to this.
Yeah, there are.
So, are there scenarios where someone is open enrolled in another district virtually, but they do decide that they want to take advantage of some programs that we have here?
And maybe, I had to talk with Colin this time to know if that is the case. I remember a brief conversation, I think with her, and just making sure that she, I think we've had athletes who were home-school who played football, or I think, that's who I'm thinking of particularly, who plays basketball, I think she has had to remind students, be careful, if you do enroll in another school district's online programming, you could be their student even though you're a home-school student, so then you, you can't be playing for us. I do remember that brief conversation, but I can, I can add and ask her about that, because it does get muddy with all these options for kids, and then how the kids can be involved in our sports or our clubs as well.
Well, I would imagine that if they're open enrolled into like McFarland, for example, through the virtual program, they wouldn't be able to play for us, because they have to play for them.
Correct.
But aren't there virtual, like, school districts where it's not like, it's totally virtual, and so they may not have any sports programming whatsoever, in which case I could see, or am I wrong about... In which case I could see, or am I wrong about that?
Um, then they wouldn't be tied to a school district, you're thinking? So then, then they would probably go into a homeschool.
I'm basing this off of like a commercial I've seen.
Okay.
So like for a, an online, um...
Like to, like to the state, maybe, or some type of some private.
It was called like...
CISA two has one.
Okay.
They have Jedi, so you can do CISA two. That's the only thing I can think of. Otherwise they're attached through a district.
But that'd probably be a home, maybe a family that homeschool status or private at home that would take advantage of that.
Good, yeah.
And they would then apply since they are private-based.
Yeah, there, yeah, difference between an e-school and virtual school and a electronic resource available to homeschool parents. And when we're talking about actual virtual school.
It's called, um, K-12, it's called a virtual public school.
You're not associated with, excuse me, a school district?
I'm, I'm assuming not.
So I would assume.
Apparently it's not come up for us, so maybe it's not about it.
That's a good question.
Yeah, but I'm sure it will come up sooner or later.
But I would think that's, it is not tied to a school district. Then they're not technically enrolled in a school district, that they would therefore be a home-based private education student.
Is that how it works?
Yep. So they, they're, so the family would be choosing to homeschool. The student could then participate in up to two of our, um, course words, courses as well as WIA and club pieces as well.
Do we need to add something in here for the home-based, private schools that says something to be effective? Maybe it's in our NIST that if you're enrolled in an online virtual school that's attached to a district, that that is not homeschooled? Because I could see how parents would be like, oh yeah, they're homeschooled. They, you know, do school from home, but really it's not.
They have to go through the process of open enrolling in order to do that?
True, I guess then they would probably know.
Then everybody knows they can't do that.
Yep.
So this, that would be in the open enrollment policy, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Um, if we wanted to, we do have a full board, they could approve this tonight by roll call or we could see it at a second reading.
Do you want to cross-reference that open enrollment policy or the, that makes sense? Since we've been bringing prejudice so much already, that some of them may need to look at both pieces. Yes, could you?
Could, um... I don't know if that policy for teens, if they're two separate policies. They're just different layers and options for kids. Could?
I don't think that you'd think of clarifying any of the other parents. There's nothing.
I could go either way.
Yeah, I could too. You're right, they'll get, obviously talked about it. But it is.
These are all, these are all kids who are resident in our district, right? Did this policy treats only those kids who are in our district?
Yes, resident district. We could definitely cross-reference it, that's, that's easy to do. That fair could look at this policy, see that down there and then read the other policy to make sure that they are on the path they wanna be on.
Do you wanna move forward then?
If, if someone wants to make a motion, we...
Cross-reference.
Yeah.
I would move to approve with the cross-reference added. But I, again, feel that I've seen this multiple times in the education training.
I would, uh, cross-reference, I believe the part-time open enrollment policy and open enrollment. So we would look to make sure, yeah, it goes to that for sure. Second motion from Damon. Anyone want a second?
Hello.
Seconded by Rod. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, the motion passes. All right, moving on to seven B, construct, construction. Picking now, consideration of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty four K Patrick's. Yeah, so education committee at the last meeting also talked about the four K contracts. And the question to the committee was, do we need to alter or change any language? And at that time, our committee was fine with the language and moved forward the agreement as it stands to the board to look at and consider language at this time if there's any need to change the contract. We're not approving sites at this time. We're gonna look at that at the summer meeting, but just looking at contractual language right now.
Do you feel that the contract works as it's intended?
Nicole Teep and I met with the directors at our October meeting, I think. And at that point, the, the directors were happy with the language. We made some tweaks, um, I think last year or the year before. And there were no concerns with the directors, no need to change. So, um, we, that's why we brought forward education in November. Because we knew typically in December, we look for, who will this contract? Because we start the four K registration then after winter break. Kind of like kindergarten registration starts a few weeks. All right, it's so hard to believe.
We got the high school meeting announcement from our middle kid.
Yeah. Yeah, so tonight we're just looking at language and if there's any, um, pieces that we'd like to return to or talk with the director, site directors on, but...
And the reason they're different is because the CCS is the monastery and they need a different, a smaller class size or something?
Um, they have, yeah, larger. They have, our, our max size is a little bit larger, one or two inches higher to embrace and to continue the monastery, we have a underlying quality of students in the classroom.
So this is only for two of our providers?
It's not for the providers, it's just the language in the contract.
She's just giving a demonstration, it's just the CCS ones a little bit.
So hearts and hands, little like, you can have a little...
So that's not really the hearts and hands, it's the one that'll be used for the other three sides?
Yep, so just an example of the three in the CCS.
Okay.
Is almost identical, except the number difference in the class size piece, which is...
I did the same thing, I went past it there. I know it was in here.
Standard section, section eight, cap size. That's the only difference between the two contracts.
Motion to roll.
Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion?
So they, in addition, there is some kind of evaluation, evaluation process? I mean, evaluations are listed in here? I, I'm just thinking the information we have about one of the providers. I'm wondering, is there a need for a different contract for a, a different provider?
So we do a site criteria checklist that we look at and Nicole Teep will meet with the directors as we bring the contracts to them and then go through, I'd say about fifteen to twenty pieces to make sure that those pieces are there, whether it's training, um, conditions, um, program setup, those kinds of things. And then we also have an independent agency come in. They do an ECKERS, which is early childhood learning on the rating scale also. And we use those assessment tools for looking at four K programming, looking at sites themselves and other types of licensing. We can, we can have individual discussions with sites if there's a concern.
Okay, and it wouldn't be considered in any way violating the terms of this contract to be discussing those things that are clearly identified in this contract?
Uh, we, the, the piece on, I think, maybe...
There's evaluations and there's pre-each and...
The piece maybe, another piece of looking at is looking at the, the provider's licensing and looking at enforcement actions as the, the language maybe you're, you're referring to under the operation today. And that's a piece, um, if, if the school district has a concern, we can go to a provider and work through some things to get on the road. But at this time, um, we're looking just at the language and then we'll talk about the site piece in our next meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion by Kimberly, seconded by Jeff. All looking to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to eight A, citizens' comments. See?
Get two more people here?
No, nothing. Okay. All right, moving on. Nine is our list of future agenda items. Grows and grows.
One, one we have for another update, I know it's, um, number R. One we have for an update on the Oregon mental health contract.
I know it's coming up pretty soon. We're doing an Oregon mental health update and, um, as well as building bridges. They're gonna come, I think it's our next SAW meeting and then the board meeting attached to that. We're kind of updating on those categories.
So is the number?
So it'll be the, it's in the group.
September seventeenth.
It'll be the third, it'll be the third Monday.
Yeah. Or if that doesn't work, then probably January, whatever that one comes up to be.
I think it's December that we talked about, but at the latest, it's the January. Sue?
Well, and to keep in mind, they kind of just started, not...
They did.
They haven't really been in force for very long.
Yeah, we're just, we're just starting to get kids signed up. It takes a while with insurance companies and everything, look for it. But they're starting, and they're starting to see kids in the district. Okay.
All right, so ten is our schedule of next meetings. If anybody's interested, the next board tour of the high school is at five o'clock on the twenty-sixth. And we are looking at doing a board workshop on February twenty-fifth. So now eleven, closed session, contemplate closed session per section nineteen point eight five, grant one, M for M, grant C, M for M, Wisconsin statute for considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee for which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Come on, flip my page here. I gotta flip it again. All right, motion by Diana, seconded by Jeff. Roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, and we'll take that back. Thanks for coming. Keep like, rate the, take the time. Right.